Good morning and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for May 2018. Madam Clerk.
Item one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956 dot nine D four.
Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Item two, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956 dot nine D one, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, one case, Dennis Ponte v. County of Calaveras et al., Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 12 CV 38597.
Are there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, we will go to closed session and return at 9:00 AM. Good morning. Welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for May 8, 2018. Will you please rise if you can and salute our flag? Supervisor Garamendi, will you please lead us?
Thank you. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on, Madam Clerk.
Report of closed session. Item one, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956 dot nine D four. On a motion by Supervisor Clapp and a second by Supervisor Mills, the board unanimously directed staff to engage Barron and Bud, join the California Opioid Consortium, and file suit against the opioid manufacturers and distributors for creating the opioid epidemic in Calaveras County. Item two, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956 dot nine D one, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, one case, Dennis Ponte v. County of Calaveras et al., Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 12 CV 38597. Supervisor Clapp had recused himself from the discussion of this item. There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to announcements. Madam Clerk.
This is a time for board members and county staff to provide updates on upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. The board will recess from 11:30 AM until 2:00 PM today to participate in the government center frog jump activities.
Are there any board announcements at this time? Staff announcements?
Good morning, Chair Tofanelli and Honorable Board of Supervisors. Kathy Galino with Calaveras County Economic Development. And I am here to provide an update on the Government Financial Strategies board item that was before you on April 17th. I am providing you and the public with a copy of the scope of work, which I believe was, there were some questions on that. And also wanted to update everyone that Government Financial Strategies has provided us with three candidates for the public opinion survey. And we will be beginning those interviews tomorrow, starting at 9:00 AM. There were three firms that responded to the RFP to provide the public opinion survey on the potential of a transient occupancy tax increase ballot measure this fall. And staff will be coordinating with our electeds and other people from the TOT Working Group, ad hoc group. And if there's any questions?
Supervisor Garamendi?
Good morning. When will we be hearing from Government Financial Strategies? If I remember our conversation correctly, it was to look at the scope of work and then hear their pitch?
Thank you.
It sounds like we're moving ahead at full tilt, so can you bring me up to speed on where we are on our request?
Yes. So they were initially going to present today, but given that we have frog jumps coming up and there was some time necessary to get the potential opinion survey firms, they're going to be presenting information on the 22nd of May at your board hearing.
Supervisor Olivera?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're going to be interviewing for positions. I must have got that confused. Did you mention that in your announcement just now?
Yes. So Government Financial Strategies on our behalf is going to help us engage with a public opinion survey firm.
Right.
And so they've provided, they put out the RFP on our behalf, three firms replied, and so we'll be interviewing all three of those firms beginning tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any public questions on this item? If not, thank you, Kathy. Any other staff reports? Seeing none. I do have one announcement. If you're here for item number 20, item number 20 of the regular agenda has been pulled and will be heard at a later date.
Oh, yes.
Say, oh, yes. Item number 20. Okay. Moving on, Madam Clerk.
Item three is from the Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation recognizing the Calaveras County Fair and Jumping Frog Jubilee, May 16th through 20th, 2018.
Supervisor Mills, I believe you have this recognition.
Thank you. Good morning. This is a proclamation recognizing the Calaveras County Fair and Jumping Frog Jubilee, May 16th through 20th of 2018, whereas the Calaveras County Fair and Jumping Frog Jubilee, May 16th through 20, 2018, whose history dates back to the first fair in 1893, and whereas the first modern frog day, frog jump was in 1928, and it's celebrating its 90th anniversary. And whereas the annual fair is commonly a community event which highlights agriculture, the arts, floriculture, the wine industry, and the best of Calaveras. And whereas the Calaveras County Fair generates hundreds of thousands of dollars for the youth of Calaveras County through the junior livestock auction, industrial arts auction, and scholarship programs. And whereas the spending activity related to the fair is $7.7 million. And whereas the community celebrates together as one, and strangers become neighbors, and children make memories. I'm asking for a motion and public comment.
Let's have public comment. First, are there public comments on this?
Also, could I just make a quick clarification that the dates of May 16th through 20th, 2018 should actually be May 17th through 20th, 2018? We had typo.
Now, start the fair early one more day.
Good morning, Lori.
Good morning. Good morning, Board Chair and staff and the board. This is frog jump time, and we're really excited. We have so much going on. We're going to be kicking off here today with our government center frog jump. We have lots of unique frog challenges this year. Our board chair has accepted a challenge from the mayor of Angels Camp for a jump off, so that'll be a lot of fun. But besides that, I really want to thank you for your support. I know some of you are going to be helping us with some judging, some of you are going to be helping us at our junior livestock auction, and really the support of the county all year through, and the support of the Sheriff's Department. We have done a lot of work with the Sheriff's Department, with our SWAT team, trying to make our venue just a safer place for our patrons. And we had the benefit of the Sheriff's Department this week because we had some county visitors come weed eat all day long. So they're staying on Tut Hill Road. So those guys. So that was really nice. And we have just so many exciting things happening, and we just want to thank you for your support and hope that you all come to the fair. It is the 17th through the 20th. For us, it feels like it's 90 days instead of four, but, and I might have even sent it to Diane wrong because I'm, you know. So hopefully let's see you there and hope to see you jump your frogs this afternoon. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Bill Wilson, District One. I'd just like to announce that we're going to have a recall booth at the fair. Thank you.
Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. I moved here in 1974, and my neighbors who've been here since the '30s warned me, you know, before the frog jump, you better get to town and get all your supplies because everything closes down during the frog jump. I couldn't quite figure it out, and he says, well, a few years back, the Oakland Hells Angels heard about the frog jump, and the angels had to come to Angels Camp, and they took over the town, apparently. I wasn't here. And scared all the locals. They had to close everything down, stores, gas stations, and everything. And I'm just wondering what the revenue was like during those days as opposed to millions that I'm hearing now. And I'm sure glad that there was a change of heart. I don't think motorcyclists are dangerous, but I wasn't here when they took over Angels Camp. So anyway, I'm glad to see us returning to celebrating and keeping things on a high note and keeping a positive attitude. So thank you for your time.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board, looking for a motion.
Still move, Mr. Chair.
I have a motion by Supervisor Olivera. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Garamendi. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes 5-0.
Therefore be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors proclaims the Calaveras County Fair and Jumping Frog Jubilee to be the signature event in Calaveras County, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this 8th day of May of 2018. And I know who I want to give this to.
Right there. Dennis, step back there. We get Clyde's floating head right behind your shoulders. If you could step, yeah, go one way or the other, but, okay, there you go. Thank you. Thank you.
Item four is from the Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation designating May as Poppy Month in Calaveras County.
Supervisor Olivera, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has a special note with me. I'm very honored to present this. It's proclaim the month of May as Poppy Month. Whereas the poppy story began during World War I, when a Canadian doctor, Lieutenant Colonel John McCray, wrote a poem he named "In Flanders Field." He noticed that there was a bloody battlefield, and it was now covered with red poppies. His poem was dedicated to the fallen soldiers and their sacrifices. And whereas, each year, American Legion Auxiliary volunteers all over the country distribute millions of the red crepe paper poppies in exchange for contributions to help disabled and hospitalized veterans. And whereas, in the American Legion Auxiliary in Valley Springs, they will be passing out poppy paper flowers in the community during May to commemorate the use of the poppy that became the official flower in 1923, as a symbol and memory of the soldiers who fought in the battlefields during World War I. And whereas, the poppies are made by disabled veterans for rehabilitation and a way to supplement their incomes and make them more self-sufficient. And whereas, the American Legion Auxiliary's mission is to provide support to veterans. All proceeds from donations are used exclusively to aid disabled veterans and their families and children. Mr. Chair, I would seek a motion to accept this proclamation.
Let us have public comments on this item first, and we'll bring it back. Public comments?
Thank you, Michael Olivera. My name is Diane Von, and I'm from District Five. And I'm the president of our auxiliary, and I appreciate the way you read that. I'd like to thank you for adopting, letting us adopt a poppy. We are 100 percent, like you said, all the donations go to the veterans and their families. Last year, when we appeared before you, we didn't realize that this year we would need even more funding to take care of our servicemen and women. Today, there are even more that are unable to take care of themselves, and in some cases, their kids, their families. We hope that this, with this proclamation, we will go out to our community to remember and honor those brave warriors who were there when our country needed them the most, but now we need them. Thank you.
Bill Wilson, District One. I want to thank Mr. Olivera for his recognition of veterans. I think, although the poppy that he referred to in that poem was actually the opium poppy, red, white, and blue, I remember a lady who was arrested because she planted the red, white, and blue poppies in the shape of a flag in her yard in, I believe it was Nebraska or Kansas, not knowing that they were actually opium poppies when she planted them. The servicemen and women of this country, my mother, who was waived during World War II, served here in Pleasanton at the Naval Air Station, or not in Naval Air Station, Naval Hospital, excuse me, during World War II. She wrote up what they used to call shell shocked, men that were, had seen such devastating carnage during combat that they were not capable of mentally handling those problems. Today, we call it PTSD. Today, our government gives those men opioids and other medications while not recognizing that cannabis has been and is used by those veterans against the law in many states, although 44 now have that medical license. Unfortunately, Calaveras County doesn't seem to have that insight anymore. Again, I want to thank you, Mr. Olivera, for recognizing our veterans. I want to thank everybody connected with the American Legion for their service, and all veterans of our county. I saw on the news, one of our veterans from World War II jumped out of an airplane in Lodi over the weekend, 90, what was he, 97, I think, something like that? I think that's incredible, and congratulations to him. Mr. Wally Wallenberger, is that his name, I believe? Not positive.
Wally Walling.
Wally Walling. Thank you, George. Anyway, thank you all veterans, and I salute you.
Good morning. My name is George Frye. Supervisor Olivera, thank you very much for our veterans. I know you're a Marine veteran, and Jack is an Army veteran officer, and I thank you both very much for your service. And I'd like to make a side comment regarding Diane. Diane's husband is still a Marine. Marines are always Marines, and he was in Vietnam. And I want to say that Diane, having come to be the president of the Post 102 Auxiliary, was an outstanding choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, George.
Other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board, call for a motion.
Still move.
Motion by Supervisor Mills, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Garamendi. Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes 5-0.
Thank you, Board. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, Calaveras County, hereby declares May 2018 to be Poppy Month, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors, County of Calaveras, State of California, this 8th day of May 2018. Could I have, Diane?
Yes.
Could I have all three of those young ladies come up?
Yes.
You know, I do have to say one quick personal note. About a month ago, I received a phone call and email from a young lady here, asking if I would take the orders of doing this again. As long as I'm supervisor, I would appreciate it that you're here.
Everybody scoot in. Scoot in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Public comments. Good morning.
Good morning. Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. Today, my topic is me. I am a flawed person. I harbor extreme political, social, and personal bias. I'm one of those what you call a nasty woman who doesn't know my place. I don't know when to sit down. I don't know when to shut up. I'm going to turn 70 next week, and my friends are dropping like flies. If I don't say it now, I may not be able to say it, and I'm not going to let it fester and ruin my sleep. At the beginning of the year, I made a pledge. I vowed to, if I saw or heard something that I didn't agree with, I would stand up and speak out. No more passive aggressive. I'm going to be assertive. At the last Board of Supervisor meeting, two members of this board could not find it in their hearts to vote for a resolution to honor a Calaveras County resident at the time of their passing, Barden Stevenow. That cut me. I was outraged, and I'm not over it yet. It was reminiscent of that buffoon in the White House who had to say that John McCain was not a hero. Can you imagine? This clown never spent a day in the military. He didn't go to Vietnam like all the rest of his peers did in those days. He weaseled out a serving with a crooked toe or a bone spur or something lame. Yet today, he's able to play round after round of golf, traipsing all over the courses. Have any of his kids ever served in the military? These golden-haired children with silver spoons born in their mouth? What civic duty have they served? What sacrifices have they made? And why do some people think they can build themselves up by tearing others down with insults and ridicule? To me, it shows petty insecurity, petty insecurities. So I made a little poster today, how I feel. Vladimir Putin is a communist. Benito Mussolini was a fascist. Adolf Hitler was a racist. What is Donald Trump?
Thank you.
In contrast, free speech.
Thank you.
Free press.
Thank you.
Free choice. Freedom!
I don't know how to follow that. Hello, I'm Sean Bagano. I'm the union representative for the IHSS workers and the nursing home, actually, here in Calaveras and Amador. Thank you for having me again. Like I said, it wouldn't be the last time you've seen me. I'm here just to support my workers, of course, my fellow providers, and to let you guys know that there's something that the union is fighting at the Capitol right now. It's called the EVV. It's an electronic visit verification. This is going to actually be intrusive to all the in-home support service workers. They're trying to make it passed and implemented, actually. They've made it, we're just trying to fight it. And what it's going to be is they have to check in and out before each task. So you have an in-home support service worker, and it's already been implemented in Texas, if they have to go take care of their client, their consumer, and say this consumer's fallen, or this consumer needs a bath, or they have to use the restroom right away, they're going to have to check in, whether it be by telephone, whether it be by electronic device where they put their thumb in, or whether it be by just using their internet. They have to check in before they take care of their provider. What is this going to do? It's going to cause this provider to actually need that help, because you know this is a, not a job, but a calling from God to help these people by heart. So how this got implemented is they actually said that the IHSS program is a fraud, that these people are frauding them out of money, people who take care of their loved ones, who they don't get the accurate hours to take care of these loved ones, who have to take care of these loved ones 24 hours. But yet, before they can do this, they have to check in and out. Now, what's going to happen if they go to take care of their loved one without checking in? They're not going to give credit to that time. They're not going to get paid for that. These are people who've had to give up a lot in their life just to actually take care of their loved one. The union is fighting this full force, but we're also making you aware of it, so that if it ever does slip through and get here, you have the power to cancel it. You have the power not to implement it. You have the power to protect your IHSS workers. And just to let you know that as a union organizer, I am also the organizer of Mark Twain, and those members who take care of your community loved ones are fighting relentlessly right now for a contract. right now for a contract. And the corporation is not willing to give them what they're worth. They're not willing to give them a raise. They're not willing to give them fair contract and rights and dignity that those workers across the street are working tirelessly, constantly shorthanded, trying to get to the loved ones that probably this community has put in there. And these workers over there are fighting for a fair contract at the table as we speak. They're going again this month, and they're being shot down quite a bit. They deserve it, any respect. So do the IHSS workers. Because they didn't pick it. God picked it for them. And they take care of those people out of their heart. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, gentlemen and ladies and Board. My name is Danielle Maxwell Avery, and my son is JJ. Today, I did want to talk about, a little bit about the electronic visit verification. I've done a little bit of research. I've actually downloaded the four apps. The software's very new. It's connected to cloud. So everything that I'm going to be checking with is going to be streamed. It's a GPS tool to cloud. My time, mileage, documenting tasks. What if I'm multitasking? I live with my client. I'm in the Sierras. It's an Internet-provided software base. What if I don't have the Internet? What if the Internet goes out? Not only am I worried about not getting paid, but what about violations if I don't check in with multitasks? This is an invasion to my home and to my son. We have very private matters. He has a, you know, I could share publicly, but I prefer not to, but if need be, I will someday. This is a small provision for the county, but big consequences for the consumers and the providers. We do face a reduction in federal funding, but it's only 1% after two years, and we don't have to implement it in this county. So the EVV violates the existing laws which could block its implementation. In California, we're calling on the counties and the state to carefully examine the legality of the electronic visit verification before it takes any steps to implement the system. I believe that's a violation of the Fourth Amendment, which I'd like to read. The right of the people to be secured in their persons' homes, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures. They are searching. They are coming into our home with a camera. That is not okay with me, nor I'm sure many people, and not a lot of people, are aware of what's going on, what's being implemented here. It goes to say, shall not be violated nor warrant shall be issued but upon probable cause, supported by oath or affirmation, and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized. Who's going to be accountable? Who's going to be the judge of me providing my care to my son? And if I'm not doing it right, or if I'm doing too much? My son's 24-hours care, I get maximum hours, and that doesn't even cover the hours. I'm just asking the Board to take this in consideration. You guys do have the power to not implement it onto our consumers and violate our homes and our privacy. I don't want to have to check in via Facebook and have my information streamed to cloud, livestream. It's so not okay. So with that, thank you for your time.
Good morning again. My name is George Frye. I have a letter that I'd like to read, and then I have some comments I'd like to make. This letter is from me dated May 5th to Diane Sepharoud, Clerk to the County of Calaveras Board of Supervisors. The subject is medical leave of absence. I will be taking a medical leave of absence from IHSS Commission on Aging and Area 12 Aging Agency on Aging for until December 31st of this year. I have several medical conditions that I need to focus in on. Last Friday night, I fell on Roaring Camp Road in Pine Grove and broke my capical. So the other thing is I have some. The very first page is from Rotary International. It's called "The Four Way Test." Is it the truth? Number one. Number two, is it fair to all concerned? Number three, will it build goodwill and better friendships? And number four, will it be beneficial to all concerned? I want you to take that to heart. This is the first organization since I've been involved in organizations for over 40 years that I just have the utmost respect for because of their four-way test. And if everybody used the four-way test, it would be a much better country, county that we live in. Additionally, I want to address Mr. Clapp's letter to the editor about saying that we can't speak or do anything, a public comment with regard to calling out people for recall. I see two veterans on this board. They get it. The other of you don't get it. I believe you don't get it. Otherwise, your behavior would be much better. I just want this to be. You figure out the rest.
Good morning again, gentlemen. Bill Wilson, District One. You have an unintended consequence of the ban. We have a Met Team Sergeant that is going around to American Legion Neighborhood Watch meetings claiming there are 2,000 illegal grows in our county right now. They're not even going to attempt to eradicate one with less than 1,000 plants. I talked to a couple of people that had half-acre grows. Not one of those half-acre grows that were regulated until June 7th of this year had 1,000 plants unless they had multiple places. In other words, more than one lot and more than one half-acre grow. So we have a sergeant who goes out, and he's either for a new sheriff. He obviously, I don't think, is supporting his boss, who told me the other day out here, he only has 500 illegal grows. But you three, in fact, all five of you, knew there were 1,000 grows when you entered office last January. You allowed the UO to continue. You allowed people to cultivate cannabis legally, trying to gain state licensing. Then nine days into state licensing, you enacted your ban. Oh, praise your holy work. You have eliminated cannabis in this county. And yet, last meeting, there were code compliance saying we have 1,000 grows in this county. They know because they flew over. They're not even looking at the ones that they can't see. They're looking at the ones they can see. There's 1,000 of them. And they're going to get to, what, 300? So 700 grows that we know are illegal are going to just go on about business while you folks have shut down 507. Now, those 507 businesses can't get their product to market, so that product's going to be illegal. I wonder what in the heck they're going to do with it, fellas? Do you think? What do you think they're going to do with it? Figure that one out. It's up to you, the local government, to allow that to be sold in the legal market. It was grown for the legal market. And only you five can do something about that. You need to make sure that everyone
Thank you.
who grew legally
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
can sell legally.
Thank you.
Good morning. Megan Gonzalez, Rolling Hills Bookkeeping, San Andreas. I came here this morning to thank Supervisor Toffanelli, Supervisor Mills, and Supervisor Clapp. Since you enacted your ban vote, I have had 27 clients call me saying they're going out of business. That's like, what, half of the businesses in San Andreas if they just all of a sudden boarded up in four months. It's also $80,000 in revenue that my company is losing this year. But the reason I wanted to thank you is because now I have some extra time on my hands that I can devote to the committee to recall Mr. Mills and make sure that you are not sitting on that board again next year. I honestly have the opinion that you three want to create some kind of retirement home that is Calaveras, that has golf courses and your restaurants you can go to for brunch and your barbershop so you can hang out at all day, and that's it. You're scared of growth. You don't want it. You don't want change. But the problem is, in about 20 or 30 years, all those retired folks that had been out golfing and going to a restaurant, hanging out at your barbershop, they're not going to be around. And all you're going to have left is a bankrupt county. And I know you two don't have that much of an issue with bankruptcy, obviously, from your history, but I do, and so do the other members of this community. I do not want to have to move my offices to Sacramento, but it looks like I'm probably going to have to because you three don't like new business, or you still have it in your heads that this is the devil's lettuce. I am tired. I have literally been fighting since I opened my business a year and a half ago. I often wonder what it would be like if I could just go to work and do accounting and bookkeeping. But no, it's constant political charge and fight, fight, fight for our livelihoods. So I'm really looking forward to November, and hopefully, you three will be gone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Clofen. I'm District One. I felt the need to come up today and speak due to a continued lack of feeling of acknowledgement. I try to be an active part of my community and volunteer. My kids go to school here. I purchased, I purchased a house here. I've also recently sat down with my supervisor to have a discussion and talk about concerns. Unfortunately, the response, as the common response here, is pointing fingers and excuses, you know, and reasons as to why things didn't work out and whose fault it really was. And what I was taught and what I've learned and what the purpose of this Board is, is to create reasonable guidelines that improve our community. It doesn't matter how difficult or how turmoil it can be working with the other people on the Board, or how much effort it seems was put in. You know, my big fault was with the regulation. I keep hearing that, oh, it was so much pressure, there was so much work. All the departments had to work so hard. Of course, they worked so hard. You know, throwing a ban in a place is depleting all of their work that they did. The last thing that I want is to be a criminal. I've never been a criminal, never came to this county to be a criminal. I actually have the newspapers in my car. "Calaveras welcoming the growers, please come." You know, I called the county departments, and they welcomed me when I said I wanted to be a legal cannabis farmer. At this point, I have personally contributed more money and personal phone calls, and I've done more myself to eradicate the illegal grows in my area. And now, I feel like I'm being called a special interest group, and I'm being called an outside interest, and that is not true. And it's not true for the majority of my industry that is here. And even though that may not be the case for your close constituents and the people that are next to you that you're talking to, it is most likely the majority of your community that I don't feel a majority of you have really reached out to and listened and tried to understand other points of view and how other people in this community are living. Not maybe your neighbor and may not be your friends, but they are in this community. And part of being supervisors is making sure that organizations get created to make these things into effect. You know, the fact of the ban coming in place, all of this product's going to the black market. I've done my absolute best to bring in distributors to help all the compliant farms stay in compliance. The distribution companies are not ready. 90 days was not enough for the distribution companies, for the other industry, to take all the product from these farms. So it's not their fault, and we've been pushed to the side. Thank you.
Good morning, Joan Wilson, District One voter. It's a gorgeous day, isn't it? This is a fantastic county. It was getting better. You know, I haven't always lived here. My parents weren't here when I was born. But I got here, and I love this place. I care about it. Let's set aside those 500 businesses that are being gotten rid of. And let's take a look at just driving down Highway 49. Empty building, empty building, empty building. This business is gone. That business is gone. Empty building. Nothing going on there. No business. No customers. Now, our Board is getting ready to probably cut budgets. Let's get rid of all of these wonderful people that worked at the planning department that helped all of us be, come, a business. Let's get rid of what else? Pretty soon, that $13 million that was going to be coming in annually is going to be gone. How are we going to survive? I've asked time and time again, how are you going to pay for this ban? There is no answers. Nobody's answered my question. I've made phone calls. I haven't gotten return phone calls. What do I have left to do? Except to get rid of the people that are killing our county, that are getting rid of people's jobs, that are putting families out on the street. What would you do? What would you do if you had people, and you do have people in this county, that are going to be facing homelessness, that have got to move, that have ran everything that they could do, put all of their money into their business, and I don't care what kind of business it is, only to be drug down with this county? Gentlemen, you have some hard work ahead of you, and I hope you're up to it. Thank you. Have a great day, you guys.
And we are back. Consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Any Board member wish to pull an item?
Yes, item 14.
Item 14. Any other item? Seeing none. Any staff wish to pull an item? Not any member of the public. Seven. Nine. Hang on. Okay, I have seven. Bonnie?
Ten.
Ten?
Thirteen, fourteen.
Hold on, hold on.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm getting a little confused. Is item nine four?
Is item 9, 14?
Item 9 was not pulled.
Yes, pulled.
Yes, it was.
Who's pulled by who?
Right here.
Your name, sir?
Tim.
Tim?
Tim McDonald, yes.
So I have 7, 9, and 14.
10.
7, 9, 10, 14, and Bonnie?
13.
13.
11, 2.
Hang on.
Which ones did the board just pull?
13 and what? 15. And Mr. Wilson?
11.
11?
Yes.
All right, so I have items number 5, 6.
5.
Hold on. Let me finish. 5, 6, 8, 12, 16, 17, 18, and 19 that I'm looking for in motion for.
What about 9?
I'm not ready.
What about 9?
9.
Chair, could we review the items that have been pulled just by numbers?
I thought we already did that, so.
Obviously, there's some.
7, 9, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15 as well?
Yes. So again, items 5, 6, 8, 12, 16, 17, 18, and 19 that I'm looking for in motion. I have a motion by Supervisor Olivera.
I'll second.
Second by Mills.
No.
No, by Clapp. Excuse me. Motion by Olivera. Second by Clapp. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Moving on to item number 7. Mr. Faubel, you pulled item number 7?
Yes.
Let the clerk read it in, and then you can come up.
Item 7 is from the Sheriff's Department, who authorized the sheriff to accept and sign Amendment 1 to contract R17PC00057 with Bureau of Reclamation to exercise Option Year 1 for the period June 1, 2018 through May 31, 2019, not to exceed an amount of $159,213.20 for law enforcement services by the Calaveras County Sheriff at New Maloney's Lake.
Mr. Faubel.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. Mike Faubel, District 2. I'm speaking as a citizen that's suffered the woes of camping at New Maloney's. Last time I did it was about six years ago. I will never camp there again. So this is coming from a citizen of Calaveras County. That place was out of control, and there was nothing that was... I don't know what the Calaveras County Sheriff can do to solve that problem except arrest people. Well, you know what? The Bureau of Reclamation should go out and hire their own security to perform these duties because we, the citizens of Calaveras County, need this enforcement of taking care of its citizens, not the citizens of Oakland, Manteca, Stockton, that come up here to raise hell, party, stay up all night, have no consideration, confront people. Our group was confronted by a group of citizens from Oakland for no reason besides the fact that we were there. And we're going to provide law enforcement for these people while we're getting ripped off here, burglaries, you name whatever illegal activities are going on. I don't care what law enforcement says here, but if their deputies are at New Maloney's patrolling the campground, they're not taking care of me and you. I say no. Let Bureau of Reclamation hire their own security force. If they have to arrest someone, they can bring them down and get them booked somehow. I don't know how that would work, but it's... We're wasting our resources there when our citizens need protection, not a bunch of rowdy drunks from Oakland. I'm very serious about this. I'm not making this up. Could have very easily been a riot there when I was there, and I will never go to Maloney's again. I'm sure there are a lot of people in this county that feel the same way. Please don't accept the money for this. Let the Bureau of Reclamation take care of their own project. Thank you.
Hang on, Jim. Is there other public comments on this item?
Bill Wilson, District 1. How many deputies pay is that for a year? Any? Do we get one? Do we get two? Do we get three? They get less than you get, $20 an hour, but they only work overtime. Do they work that overtime? Is that overtime money that's going into this project? Is that fees that we're charging? The deputies work overtime like they did to come out and inspect? We had to hire CHPs. Are we going to have to fulfill officers? Are we going to need officers to fulfill this contract? Are we going to have to hire overtime off-duty officers either from out of county or from some other jurisdiction to come in and provide that support at New Maloney's? Where's that money getting spent, gentlemen? How do we deal with that? I think that needs to be looked at. Thank you.
George Frye again. I support the Sheriff's Department 120 percent. Maybe part of it's because I'm retired law enforcement. But the Bureau of Reclamation, if they don't have sworn peace officers, they need to get them. And we need to spend the money on deputies, not on some Bureau of Reclamation project. To me, that's just ludicrous to even consider this today. Thank you.
Other public comments? Seeing none. Jim, I'm going to answer some of the questions.
Good morning. Jim Macedo. I'm the captain with the Sheriff's Office. Just to address some of the concerns, this is an amendment to an ongoing contract we've had for several years. The cost breakdown is noted on the second page of the document where it lays out how much of the funding is going towards wages and benefits, overtime, and also some vehicle costs. There's also a mileage reimbursement. It's clearly broken out. With respect to New Maloney's and that general area, the general area of New Maloney's is within Calaveras County. So if there was a call for service, we would have to respond there anyway. So this supplemental funding actually offsets cost impacts to where we would be called there to enforce calls for service or crimes committed in that area regardless. They do currently have park rangers there. Those park rangers are not recognized as peace officers in the state of California. There would have to be some legislative changes at the state level to fix that. They do supplement the Sheriff's Office in so much as provide services and assistance beyond what we could provide in that area. The deputy does on occasion leave the New Maloney's area to back up other deputies that have other calls outside that area of influence. I've spoken to the board before about the difference between good grants and contracts. This is a good one. This one does not negatively impact us in so much as some of the other grants and contracts we've had in the past. New Maloney's has been a pretty good partner with us to date. Sometimes we have to, you know, shake the tree a little bit to get revenue back from them because it is the federal government. And then lastly, and probably most importantly, this contract has some homeland security concerns related to it. Park rangers are not trained, nor do they interact on a regular basis with officials in homeland security or national security issues. As I'm sure most of you are aware, there is a dam there, and that is also a water source for a lot of Californians. So if in fact there are calls for service relating to homeland security, we have a much better, much more rapid open lines of communication with the federal government as it relates to those types of calls for service. And while it is unfortunate that the gentleman spoke about being contacted by a rowdy group of folks, that is unfortunately, that happens at that lake as well as others, I believe. Some of it has to do with the proximity of not a lot of space between campsites. So you go camping, and you want a quiet rural-type environment, and you end up with loud noise and partying. In some cases, you might be a little, you know, a little better off standing in your own backyard because you have more space between you and your neighbors you do between those campsites. But that's not something we control. We do make arrests. We do patrol. We write citations out there. We also do a lot of public, kind of proactive work, public safety stuff as it relates to life vests and just safety measures. So I believe that addresses the public comments and questions. If the board has any questions, I'll stand by.
Board questions? Supervisor Olivera?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Captain, welcome. Good morning. Captain, thank you very much for your dissertation on the New Maloney's assignments. And correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that a dedicated deputy for that particular contract?
It is. However, we do supplement it with overtime at times. It just depends on our staffing levels and what's going on on a given day or a given week.
And that deputy, is there more than one deputy assigned to that? Is it one position, one deputy?
Just one.
Just one?
Yeah.
And that's his primary, his basic duty is to provide services for New Maloney's under that contract?
Correct.
And those expenses are covered by the contract revenue?
Correct. So when we signed this contract, we actually added a new position to support this.
Okay. Thank you, Captain.
Supervisor Mills?
And additionally, Captain, as you know, that's a shared lake.
Yes, I do.
And the contract with Tuolumne County is different than the one in Calaveras.
Yes.
Primarily because Tuttle Town is a different venue for them. So this is a joint venture, so to speak, on the lake itself as to how we handle marine safety there.
How we handle boating safety, yes, absolutely.
Right. So having put in all of the electrical and the bathrooms and everything at Glory Hole, I'm intimately familiar with how tight that area can be, especially when there's a lot of camping going on there. We can't expect it to have just the crawly snakes, so to speak, running around. And there are a lot of snakes out there, as you know.
Yes, yes.
Do we have to also deal with medical aids on a regular basis out there?
Yes. I wouldn't say a regular basis, but yes, medical aids. Fire and both ambulants do respond out to that area.
And I understand New Maloney's, or Alta Ville Maloney's Fire, has a boat located there?
I know there's a couple of boats located there beyond our boats, but the specifics of who owns them I'm not familiar with, unfortunately.
And that's for their public safety work that they do as well. And then we also have a marina there.
Yes.
Which provides an additional resource that is not available on the other side of the lake.
Correct. And when you say "we," not the county, but there is a private marina there, yes.
Correct. So all of this fits together. I don't see this as a bad contract either. If there's issues, though, that public is concerned about safety or whatever, they need to be addressed with your office in a timely manner, and we move towards correction. But thank you for the contract. I think it's a big improvement over what we had before.
Supervisor Clapp, your light's on. Do you have anything?
I would move the item.
No question. No more. Mr. Chair. Captain, excuse me, I forgot to bring this up. And I'm a little biased because I have worked at assignments like this when I was with the Sheriff's Department. In the case of where we do have a pretty major incident, as you mentioned, it is in Calaveras County, and we are charged to provide police services. All available units would respond to that incident, not just that one deputy, correct?
Correct.
All right. So we're actually providing public safety services up and beyond that one deputy with the department?
Correct. When I originally referenced supplemental services, that deputy is also available to leave and back up other deputies in the area or hire patrol or whomever that needed some assistance. It's actually another position, an added officer in that general area. So it does provide some public service as well.
Okay. Thank you, Captain.
Just something else popped into my head. It has to do with marine safety, since we have marine safety acting from the Tuolumne side as well as the Calaveras side. Is it my understanding that the deputies are not cross-deputized?
Can you define what you mean by cross-deputized?
In other words, that they have full power of jurisdiction in Calaveras County as well as Tuolumne County?
So we are peace officers in the state of California, so I could enforce any peace officer duties in Los Angeles County, San Diego, Del Norte, Modoc. So when we literally cross the county line into the lake, our deputy sheriffs, we commonly assist each other. So we have full peace officer powers in the entire state of California. So there is no need for cross-deputization as it relates to going from one county to another.
Thank you. Appreciate the comment.
All right. So I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move the item.
A motion by Supervisor Clapp. Does that a second?
I'll second, Mr...
Second by Supervisor Olivera. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Moving on to item number 9. Madam Clerk, do you want to read?
Item 9 is from the Sheriff's Office, "To authorize the sheriff to accept and sign Amendment Number 1 to U.S. Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration Grant 2018-07 for illegal cannabis eradication from October 1, 2017 through November 30, 2018, increasing the contract value from $45,000 and no cents to $75,000 and no cents with a net increase of $30,000 and no cents. This action requires a 4/5 affirmative vote of the board."
Tim, you pulled this item.
Tim McDonald, D1 voter. My question is, is this tied to the contract that we had before? And that was for aircraft, helicopters, and whatnot to assist in the eradication of illegally grown cannabis on public lands, not private lands? I think I could be confused. And if so, this extra $30,000, I'm just curious how many more eradications they'll be able to assist on. I don't know how much it costs to fire up a helicopter and fly back and forth to the dump or whatnot, but I'm glad they're out there doing it. I'm just trying to be clear if this is only on public lands. Thank you.
Other public comments?
Bill Wilson, District 1. What do we need this money for? Three of you voted to ban. There is no cannabis cultivation in Calaveras County, according to you three. Why would we need money to eradicate illegal cannabis? 100% compliance, gentlemen. You have 100% compliance, right? That's what the ERR said. That's why the ban was your best option, correct? This is, again, like Tim said, I believe this $75,000 can only be spent on federal lands. It can't be spent on states, so the eradications in the houses on your street, Mr. Toffanelli, would not be covered by this, correct? The federal government couldn't do this, and this is only going to be from October to September, correct? We don't get it any other time, and we can't spend that money at any other time. So all of the other eradications come out of the county's pocket, correct? They don't come out of the federal government. The DEA is not going to come in and help us here, are they? Except for flying a helicopter back and forth from the dump to, or to the load site from the grow site? Is that what that money's being spent for? And hopefully, we get it. 2,000 illegal grows, and you're only going after the ones with 1,000 or more plants, huh? Congratulations, you guys.
Any other public comments on this item?
Michael Faubel, District 2. So it's a net increase of $30,000 with what we have in the county going on. My question is, why bother?
Any other public comments? Seeing none. Jim?
Good afternoon. Jim Macedo. I'm the captain with the Sheriff's Office. This is Amendment 1 to the 2018 DEA agreement. I've spoken to the board about this in the past. I'm going to just address...
I'm going to just address quickly the questions or comments that were brought up. There's a clear breakdown of the expenditures on packet page forty. It shows exactly where the money's going as it relates to overtime, professional and specialized services, et cetera, et cetera. This contract is not tied to just federal lands. This contract and these funds can be used on both federal and private lands. If the board recalls, when I testified previously, we used to utilize a lot of the DEA funds to eradicate marijuana cultivation sites on federal lands. However, with the legislative changes, a lot of the cultivation moved away from federal lands, back onto private lands. Not knowing what's going to happen as it relates to the ban, some of those cultivation sites could move back onto federal lands. We also wanted to be preventative and ask for more funding so that we could be responsive to, to the ban, not knowing how many people would, would leave on their own. The domestic cannabis eradication program has been in existence for a while. We did reach out to them and ask for more funding. This is the amount they, they decided to, to give to us. We do think it will, it will be useful, however, you know, we don't exactly have a, a perfect grasp on what each individual person's going to do as it relates to whether they're going to self-abate and move on or whether they're going to defy the ban and grow their own, grow on their own. So we wanted to be, be ready. I will take any questions from the board at this particular time. And just as a side note, this money cannot be used to supplement and hire an additional employee. That's addition, you know, originally what we had wanted is we wanted another investigator to help offset the impacts relating to marijuana cultivation, but we are not allowed to hire a new person with this funding. It's very specific on what it can and cannot be used for. So the credit goes to the sheriff and the, some staff at the sheriff's office for applying for and receiving the increase on this particular item.
Supervisor Olivera, your lights on?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Captain, once again, thank you for coming. Could you define, for the purpose of clarity, professional and special services as indicated on page two, under the expenses on both grant applications? What does that involve? Those are pretty large numbers.
Sure. That could be utilized for hiring helicopters, as was mentioned in here, both private helicopters. The sheriff's office uses both government and private helicopters. It also allows us some flexibility to utilize other professionalized services. We have the same item in all of our budgets and it really depends. We use, in some of our budgets, we use it for psychological services for hiring. In another budget, we use it for hiring a company or companies that come in and help us eradicate marijuana. So, but with respect to this, we utilize some, a, a lot of this fund is, is going to be dedicated, depending upon the need, to air support services for reconnaissance and removal and also for inserting, inserting staff into difficult, difficult areas. Sometimes it's, it saves a lot of time and money and injury to staff to insert them via helicopters opposed to hiking into certain areas. And then there was one other point I wanted to make here. Oh, also on the breakdown, you'll notice we did a significant increase in travel expenses. And as you know, with the approval of the urgency ordinance, we had a lot of individuals that arrived in Calaveras County to cultivate marijuana from all over the world. And some of those people committed crimes and left and we wanted to have sufficient staffing in place should we choose to go after them wherever they may hide. We wanted to have some staffing in place to do just that. So we transferred some money over to follow those cases where they, where they lead.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you.
Any other board questions? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
So.
A motion by Mills?
Second.
Second by Olivera. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes by zero. Next item, number ten. Madam Clerk?
Item ten is from the administrative office. To adopt plans, specification and bid documents necessary for the construction of a security window and wall for the Treasury Tax Collector's Office and authorize the purchasing agent to execute the bid documents, set the deadline for submission of bids and submit legal notice advertising, bid number seventeen dash one zero six zero dash seventeen dash nine one four, and authorize the county purchasing agent to bid, to award the bid, number seventeen one zero six zero seventeen nine one four, to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. Execute any contract documents necessary for the work, subject to county council and risk management review and approval, and report back to the Board of Supervisors said bid results at the next available meeting following evaluation of bid results.
Bonnie, you pulled this item?
I did. I think someone else did too, but.
I have Bonnie written down.
I just had a couple of questions. Are these folks feeling threatened? I know we just had tax time and were, are they receiving any threats? Why do we need to build something extra? And then what is the anticipated cost of this construction? And is this money coming from the general fund?
Any other public comments?
Yes, Bill Wilson, District One. Again, gentlemen, we just got thirteen million dollars in cash through that window without security. People were bringing cash in in big bags. No problems. Nobody tried to rob anybody. And now, since we banned, we're not going to have to worry about taking that cash in through that window anymore. Do we really need to spend that money? Really? We need to spend that money. Are those people that threatened over there? That people paying their property taxes now? They're going to get robbed? They're going to accost somebody through that window? We need security at the tax collector. Really? Amazing. Didn't need it for thirteen million dollars in cash, but we need it for property taxes. Okay. You spend it. Have fun.
Those are public comments. Seeing none? We'll bring it up to Bonnie.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Bonnie Rich administration. And I apologize, some of Bonnie's questions I did not understand. I did hear her inquire about, because of my hearing impairment, I didn't understand what she was saying. I want to make that clear. This particular component of the project is approximately forty-five thousand dollars. We won't know the exact cost until the bids do come in. At mid-year, the board approved this project under the county's capital improvement plan budget unit. And I'm sorry, if someone could refresh for me Bonnie, the other question?
Bonnie, you want to come up and ask a question that she didn't ask or that she didn't answer?
Bonnie did answer, it's forty-five thou, oh, anticipated forty-five thousand.
Correct.
And it's coming out of capital improvements. Is that general fund money?
This particular project, no. It is budgeted for in the capital improvement plan budget. However, these funds are coming from certificates of, excuse me, certificates of participation, C O P dollars, which are non-general fund dollars.
Okay. Any board questions?
Mr. Chair, I have one.
Bonnie, hold on.
Thank you, Bonnie, for coming this morning. Do we know of any other county that has this type of protection for their tax-collecting employees?
Not that I am aware of presently. I have not reached out. I'm not aware that Amador nor Tuolumne nor El Dorado do. And I do know that El Dorado just went through an extensive remodel of their main campus and that was not included as a part of their remodel. But I do not know. I cannot speak to other agencies. I did not do that outreach.
Mr. Chair, would it be possible to hear from our tax collector, Ms. Sullivan, on this?
I just looked for her out here and she's not sitting out there. I don't know if she's listening. If Barbara, if you can get over here.
Maybe, Madam Clerk, could you call her? I'd like to hear from her personally. Chair, if it needs to be, we can do a motion to table and, and pick it up again later when she arrives.
We can do that. We can table this item and bring it back when Barbara gets in here or if she's even here on campus.
So I would make that motion to table.
Move to.
I, I would second.
Hold this item until later today. You seconded that, Olivera?
I do.
Okay. Any other comments? Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to table this for a few minutes. Move on to item number eleven.
Item eleven is from the administrative office. Authorize the purchasing agent to piggyback on El Dorado County's RFP number twelve dash nine eight six dash zero six one for the placement of a Kiocera lease copier for the Public Works Department for a sixty-month term at an annual cost of two thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventy-two cents, which comes out to be two hundred and thirty-two dollars and six cents per month, plus a cost-per-copy fee with Discovery Office System, Inc. of Sacramento, California. Authorize the purchasing agent to execute the lease agreement for same and authorize the purchasing agent to work with the county auditor controller and information technology department to evaluate the cost-benefit analysis of moving from the duplication fund accounting structure for the purchase of copiers placed through the county to a leased copier or leased slash rental copier program utilizing the county of El Dorado's RFP through its extended term of October, two thousand twenty.
Mr. Wilson, you pulled this item.
Yes, I do. Busy day today. The biggest problem I see with this is, one, we're leasing the copier when we could purchase. Number two, I don't know what the Public Works Department, their annual or semi-annual number of copies is, but I'd say somewhere around a quarter of a million, just off the top of my head. Two hundred and fifty thousand sheets of paper. Depending, I assume that this one is like any HP or any other system where it would be used as the printer and copier. If it's a copier at three thousand dollars, you guys are getting ripped off. I'm sorry. I can get you a copier, it's a lot cheaper than that. The per-copy fee is the big problem here when you start adding this up. Two hundred and thirty-two dollars a month, that's two hundred and thirty-five dollars. It's chump change. I grant that. But a two cent, three cent, five cent, half cent per two hundred and fifty thousand copies starts adding up real quick. That two hundred and thirty could end up at a thousand dollars a month, depending on how many copies go through that machine. I think before we just say, sure, we'll pay for the copies, I think we ought to find out from Public Works what their number of copies per month, per week, per six months, per quarter, per year. How many do they have? You're going to have this for how many? Five years. So five times that, whatever that fee is or cost per copy, you're going to pay that for five years. A penny a copy, two hundred and fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars a year for copies. Really?
Any other public comments?
Rich Judy C., District Five. I work at ATCA and I've worked in a lot of places where photocopiers are leased. And every place I've worked, I've found that purchasing the machine and having a maintenance agreement with a, with a local supplier is better. I, I just don't see the logic of piggybacking onto El Dorado County's RFP, which is a county, two counties over. They did a request for, for proposal for their local, the people who service them and they, they chose somebody out of Sacramento. I'm sure if, you know, Calaveras County were to go for an RFP, we would get bids from probably local vendors and we could take a look at this. I mean, this lease per, this lease per month is fine, but what Bill's saying is true. I mean, the thing is, is not, you know, the first, the first thousand copies are cheap, but then when you go overage in terms of what your, what your copy costs are, it really gets pricey. And so I would urge you to reconsider thinking about coming up with a, a purchase option here with local, with local vendors. And, and yeah, and, and I would, I would just think that piggybacking onto some, some other county's RFP process, you know, we have an RFP process here. And there's no reason for us to have to borrow somebody else's. You know, we have a perfectly fine purchasing agent, we have perfectly fine ways to, to, to look into things. And so I would recommend not piggybacking on somebody else's RFP process. Thanks.
Any other public comments? Bonnie?
Thank you again, Bonnie Rich administration. All fantastic questions. And so let me give the board a little bit of a background here. First of all, this item is requesting a placement of a lease copier with the Public Works Department. This particular copier does not participate in the duplication fund, which is the current accounting structure for general fund departments who pay on a cost-per-copy basis. So this is essentially a pilot test drive to see if this is a path we may need to go. Firstly, Public Works has a dire need to have their copier replaced. If their current machine is done, it has died, they cannot get parts for it, it's not even serviceable anymore. We need some sort of support today to place the copier for Public Works so they will not be functional. Secondly, the gist of this agenda item is asking the board to allow purchasing to continue to work with the Director of I T and with the Auditor Controller to determine if this is the most reasonable prudent business, business path to go down, lease versus own. We currently own a number of our machines. The cost of those machines depend, for the purchase price of those machines, depending on when you purchase them, are expensive. Machines that were purchased a few years ago were only eight thousand dollars. This machine for Public Works, if we were to purchase it today, would be somewhere between fifteen and eighteen thousand. On the five-year lease copier plan, we will be paying roughly around thirteen thousand dollars a year. Maintenance staples and toner are included in that cost. There is no extra cost for maintenance. When we purchase our machines outright, we pay for annual maintenance. For the fiscal, excuse me, for this fiscal year, seventeen eighteen, the I T department has appropriated approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars to maintain the roughly twelve to thirteen copiers that we currently own that are placed throughout the county. I'm going to talk about the cost-per-copy program in a minute, but one of the things that I wanted to share with the board and with the public is that one of the major advantages of leasing versus purchasing, particularly when it comes to document imaging products, is that the technology changes so rapidly. And when we purchase the machines, it becomes more expensive to maintain them because they become obsolete very quickly. The technology is rapidly improving and this is a weird, it's a, it's not a weird, it's a unique market in that we generally realize benefits at the end of that five-year lease term, entering into a, a new lease term with updated equipment. And typically, the lease prices are always reduced. Just in negotiating this contract over the last two months, the lease price dropped an additional fifty dollars. I don't have a good explanation for why, but that's how this industry works. The only materials we pay for are for the actual, the, the copy paper. Now, on the cost per copy in the agenda packet, this is going to be a little tough to follow, but. but we pay, it is proposed that we would pay .0045 for a black and white image. For a color image that has less than 2% fill, that means, an image that has less than 2% color, it's .0175 per copy. The, if the color is more than 2% fill, we will pay .045. Under the county's current plan for a black and white copy, we pay .05 per copy. Again, that's versus .0045. Under the county's current plan, we pay .15 per copy for color. Again, the cost per copy for color under this plan is at the most expensive rate, assuming over 2% fill, .045. So, it is still significantly less. Now, I heard that, and it's an extremely valid question, is how do we know how many copies the departments are running? For the departments that currently own their machines, we don't know. But for those that are in the duplication fund, there are monthly readings and, and the vendors will work to provide quotes based on what the usage is. I do have in the audience Stan Moore, the Director of IT, who can talk to you more about his department oversees the actual duplication fund, excuse me, for those owned copiers that we currently have in place. So, I know that there was another concern that wasn't brought up by the public, but that was brought up elsewhere in terms of not having the flexibility to move copiers as we might reorg our departments and our facilities. And that is also a legitimate concern. However, the majority of these copiers that are owned, or, excuse me, that are, participate in the duplication fund, they are in a central location and shared by multiple departments. And so, even though departments may reorganize, the copier stays put. We all enter in our unique departmental codes, and that's how the cost is tracked. And if there are concerns beyond that, we'll certainly work with the vendors to make sure that we have the flexibility to do what we need to do to keep departments in good operating condition. But I think that addresses most of the questions I thought I heard. And if Stan would like to come up and talk anymore?
I have a couple of questions myself.
Sure.
On your cost per copies on the county side of it, you gave a quote. Does that include, when you give that number, does that include the paper?
No, whether you lease or purchase.
No, 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 no. I understand.
We will, we always pay for paper separate.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, one, the ones that we own, you gave a cost per copy that seemed to be significantly more. What I'm saying, the cost that we have at the county, not, not this lease, that cost that you gave to us include the paper?
No, sir, it does not.
That was only the ink that went on?
That is correct.
Okay, that's why I was trying to...
That's the image.
Yes.
We're paying for the image.
Okay. How old is the current machine that you're replacing?
For Public Works, I know that it's more than five years old. And because it is for Public Works, it, I can't give you an exact copy count, excuse me, because the duplication fund does not track that. But as you know, it's a large department with multiple divisions. It's, it's, it's not a map plotter copier, but it is a copier that's gonna, that will receive heavy usage.
And is it a copier that they can reproduce plans on?
Um, up to a certain size, I'm, I'm sure. Like I said, it's not a map...
Not a 30 by 24, but a half-size?
Correct, correct, yes.
All right.
I allowed the department to work directly with the vendor to identify their specific needs so that they were insured to receive a machine that met their specific needs.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. You answered most of the other ones during your speech, so... Any other board member questions? If not, we'll open for a motion.
Sorry, someone...
Oh, sure, come on up, Stan. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm with the board, Stan Moore, IT. So, the duplication fund process, there's, there's a lot to be absorbed. So, apologize for that. One minor clarification to, to what Bonnie had talked about. The 5 cent per charge for black and white, the 15 cent per charge for color, well, that's a lot. That, that covers multiple areas for the departments that choose to participate in the duplication fund. Part of it is the IT staff that it takes to do the billing, to order the supplies, to just manage the whole process. That's a fairly small portion of the whole thing. And it pays for all the maintenance by the vendor. That $27,000 that Bonnie had talked about, that's factored in. And the way that the maintenance is charged for those, it's, it's all based on a, for every page that is printed, whether it's color of black and white, there, there's a charge that the vendor has. It's a, it's a pretty small amount, but it does add up to $27,000 for the number of pages that we print over the year. The biggest piece, and, and, and there's a small amount for paper. We, we don't, the, departments that run this process don't buy their own paper. When they need paper, we send it to them. That's, that's part of their nickel and 15 cents. The biggest place where that nickel and 15 cents goes, and it has gone that way for years, has been for a duplication fund from which we then draw down when we purchased the, the, the copiers. So, there is, right now, there's about $58,000 in that fund. There will be more that will be contributed at the end of this year. Every year, we collect more during the year, it goes into the fund. If we buy copiers the next year, it draws down on the fund. So, that fund has been self-sustaining. That's one of the places where, working with administration and the auditor, we have to take a look at that as well as the charge and, and, and see if we're charging appropriately and if we've got the right amount in that fund. So, that's the biggest place where that nickel and 15 cents goes today.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Question, Dennis.
No, sorry. My apologies. I do have one quick note. So, just so we're understanding, we're, we're looking at an alternative to purchasing through this particular agenda item, lease versus purchase.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that's straight. Thank you, Stan.
Okay. Bring it back. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Mills.
Second.
Second by Olivera. Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Madam Clerk, we are due to, to break at 11:30 for the frog jump outside. Okay? So, everybody knows, 11:30, whether we're complete here or not, we will be breaking to go outside for the frog jump, Government Center Frog Jump. Moving on, item number 13.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I see that the tax collector is here to answer questions on that previous item.
Yes, you're correct.
Good morning, Barbara Sullivan. Sorry it took me a minute to get over here. Couple questions, or clarifications I'd like to make. This item was in front of the old board in 1617. I think Mr. Mills was aware of that one when he came on. So, this is just another item clearing up, I think, what Bonnie has to do as far as getting the contractors in and approve for it. So, I'm confused as to why now this is being brought up. Prior to the cannabis coming in, prior to me collecting that tax, this was supposed to be done, and it wasn't. So, besides that 13 million that I collected with that, I also collect 80 million in property taxes. Of that, probably, probably 18 in cash, 18 million cash. So, this is an ongoing thing, and I'm trying to be protective of my area because it is very volatile where I sit. Matter of fact, we had evacuation yesterday for active shooter fire and all that. And because I'm getting this reinforced wall and, and the window, it does help on that as far as my staff being safer. Because it's not, I don't know, if you've ever been through my department, we have one back door, so... But even the Sheriff's Department has bulletproof. It's the Sheriff's Department, so I don't know what the concern is, so...
Okay.
Okay. So, anything else?
Any other questions?
I do. Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Thank you for coming over, Ms. Sullivan.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, it was a little late.
The reason you're here is to explain questions that have been brought up by public and by the board on this particular item, even, well, even though it was decided by a prior board to look into this project, and now we're proceeding with it. Do you know of any other agency or any other county that has this type of protection? This is what I call anti-ballistic glass.
Well, I only have three windows, so...
Understand.
Other departments are bigger than mine.
No, I'm talking about other counties.
San Joaquin does, San Joaquin, because they implemented a new building, you know, so they have to get more high-tech, I guess. Similar to what the jail did and the sheriffs, you know, they were new, up and coming. This has been looked at because I have ADA compliance issue too with my window I don't have. So, we're gonna enforce and put that, you know, into the window also. But I'm not aware of, I didn't call other counties for it. I just know what I, my needs are.
Now, as a tax collector, are you aware of any incident that this type of modification would have benefited throughout any of the 58 counties in California or even the nation? And I'm not trying to be...
I don't understand.
Negative here. I'm trying to make sure we get a, we get an idea of what we're doing. We have no idea of anybody walking into the tax collector's office and pulling out a gun and saying, "Stick 'em up."
Because Macedo has things that have happened to us in the strangest, you know, spots of this campus. It's not just mine. It could be, happen anywhere.
I understand.
But I mean, it's time for me to be a little bit more... I have cameras. The cameras help because I'm able to see people before things get out of hand. I do make 911 calls. So, I don't know how much I'm supposed to disclose as far as what's happened or in public. We can talk after, if you'd like.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you for coming over.
Yeah, not a problem.
Supervisor Clapp?
Barb, I, I heard that you were actually booed one time just recently.
At the fair.
I mean, I was surprised because I can't see booing you for anything.
Well, Laurie Giannini was really nice. She said, "They just need to change my title." So, yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Mills, you have...
Yeah, just to, to make a parallel point, CCWD in their entrance has what?
They have bulletproof now. I'm not sure about the caliber again of that one, but I, when I saw hers, I liked the idea that it's, you could talk through it without having to be at a, at a speaker. You know, it's gonna be open, kind of like a little bit, so you can hear through it. But yeah, I've looked at a lot of them. I went to the credit union, you know, they have some bulletproof glass in there. Omqua doesn't, but the credit union does. So, I mean, it just depends on who's looking at improving what.
Well, the point is, is being proactive in the...
Yeah, not reactive.
Realizing the potential exists and knowing that we're gonna take whatever steps necessary to protect our staff, especially where there is a lot of, large volume of cash that could move.
Great. And there could be other things coming down the pipe that we don't know about.
And this, since the funds were already there anyway, and it's been talked about for so many years, it's, it's really not a difficult situation for us to address. It's just a matter of getting it done.
Sure.
So, I appreciate you bringing the item back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
All righty.
So, I'm open for a motion on this item?
So moved. Second?
I have a motion by Supervisor Olivera, second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Now, Madam Clerk, item number 13.
Item 13 is from the Code Compliance Department to uphold administrative citation issued for Code Compliance Case Number 1907 regarding Darren Samuel and the property identified by APN 021009013 located at 6175 Calaveras Circle in Mountain Ranch, California, authorizing abatement and a lien for administrative and abatement costs.
Bonnie, you pulled this item.
Yes, I pulled 13, 14, and 15 because they all relate to the same thing. I thought we had decided a bunch of years ago that any time a, a property was abated, that would not be put on the, on the consent agenda, that it would be put on the regular agenda because it, it impacts people's personal property. I just wondered when that change happened, that it's not on the consent, the regular agenda anymore that... And I think it was actually Mr. Clapp that brought that up as a, a way to give somebody that's losing their property the right to have a, almost a little mini-hearing here. I just wondered when that change happened.
I, I did, I, that's always been a concern of mine, but that change never did happen. It's always been on the consent agenda. I asked it one time for it not to be, but it's always been on the consent.
Hi, Sarah Dekay, Deputy County Counsel. There's no requirement in the code for there to be a public hearing, of course, unless the property owner is here and wishes to, you know, address the board. And so, that's why I believe they've been placed on the consent agenda. That said, if it's the board's preference, you know, certainly the Code Compliance Department can start putting them all on the regular agenda.
If I, if I remember going back to that conversation, when I was sitting here thinking about it, we did have that conversation, but we also had a conversation that, that we'd ask Code Compliance officers when we got to this point to alert us supervisors if it was in our district. Sometimes we can work with the people to get them back in compliance and help out or so forth, so we could make aware of it. And then we would have an option to bring it back either on consent or regular agenda. I don't recall making a vote or anything that we would change the code. It would have to come back to us in order for us to do that. But we did have that conversation about if it was in our district, that code would notify us when it got to this point so we could say yea or nay or go and find out and talk to the owner what's going on, so... Supervisor Mills?
Yeah, I, that, I, being aware of these situations within our district, we do have other assets at our disposal to assist property owners. Maybe it's a situation of an elderly couple that things just spiraled out of control, and there's health reasons. There's, could be a lot of other extenuating circumstances. There are, there are civic organizations, there are faith-based groups, there's a lot of others that would be more than willing to help in some of these situations if they were aware that the help was needed. So, that's why it's important that we stay in the loop so that we can assist where we can in helping those people that are asking. And there's times too that people are just too proud. They just feel as though they want to do it themselves, and, and we understand that. But I don't see this as being a, a negative. I, I just, I'd like to do everything we can to help them wherever we can, from our side, to just accomplish a goal of being a good neighbor. And that's really what it comes down to. So, thank you.
I didn't really call for public comments yet. But go ahead, no, go ahead.
I have a comment.
I'm open for public comments. Let's, let's have public comments. We kinda got ahead of ourselves a little bit.
Yeah, hi, my name is Fernando Leva. I'm in District 2. And one of the reasons why this particular issue has come up, it's been going on for two and a half years. Violations of Title 17.04, people living in a trailer with no septic system, no power, short of a generator when they run it periodically. There was originally used for marijuana grow, personal caregiver, which was abated in 2016 because it exceeded the canopy size. Then when the next grow season came around, some people came in to live in this RV, and they had a marijuana grow there. They were abated because it was an illegal grow. And now, we've got a situation where people are, are living in this RV. They're not the owners. They're, they're just transients that are coming through, and they have no septic system. They're, in essence, endangering the environment. There's garbage, there's trash vehicles there. And our association has been trying diligently to get these people to stop using it. And so, we feel that the best way to do that is to have the county remove the RV so that now they won't be able to stay in it and basically pollute the environment. So, I would ask that the, the board, you know, consider that and enforce and allow Code Compliance to enforce the regulations because it's just been going on for way too long. Thank you.
Any other public comments? If not, I'll bring it back to the board. Mike, you had the...
I, I do, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to briefly note that in my district... I just wanted to briefly note that in my district, I have sufficient notification through Code Compliance, we have situations that happens. And as a result of that conversation we had a while ago as a Board, I'm getting great cooperation through Code Compliance. I appreciate that fact.
With that being said, I'm open for a motion.
So I'll make a motion to move items 13, 14, 15. If Bonnie, I just had the one general question that we might have answered.
Can't do that.
Supervisor Mills also pulled item 14.
Excuse me, Supervisor. And I'll make a motion for number 13.
I'll second.
You have a motion, second on the paper?
Aye.
Close? Passes 5-0. Item number 14, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry, I have no idea who made the second.
I did.
Thank you.
Supervisor Olivera, I'm sorry.
Item 14 is from the Code Compliance Department to uphold administrative citation issued for Code Compliance Case Number 2028 regarding Charles and Paula Schwartz and the property identified by APN 068049006 located at 735 Anray Court, Murfrees, California, authorizing abatement and a lien for administrative and abatement costs.
Supervisor Mills, you pulled this item?
Yes, Chair, I pulled the item to allow the property owners an opportunity to speak to the citation and to hear a little bit better what the situation is, if they have the time to do that.
Okay? Any other? Okay, we'll open it up. Yeah? Public comment?
My name is Charles Michael Schwartz, and I'm here with my wife, Paula. We are the owners of the property that was just described. First of all, let me say, I, I appreciate you guys taking the time, and ladies taking the time. I also am an elected public official, serving on the Murfrees Fire District Board, and I go through a lot of the things that you go through as well, so I, I feel for you. We bought our property back in 2005, and on that property was a house, was a, a single wide dwelling that, that frankly, we never, we intended to rip down from the get-go. We, our daughter, who was sort of down and out at the time, asked that she live in that, in that property. And she did, and she, and currently still does. She worked for us, for me, sort of in, in an effort to sort of help kinda off, offset some of the costs that we, that we may involve with that water, electric, on and on and on. The house burned this past year, and we are having a very, very difficult time getting she and her family off of the property. We have, it's the quintessential catch 22. We've worked with everybody in the, in the county that we can possibly find. My new hero in life is Courtney Minehart. He has been a terrific help. I'm not sure if Courtney's here or not, but if he, whatever, he's being paid, he needs a raise. So he has been helped. We have, at this particular point in time, we've probably spent at least $2,000 in dumpster fee alone, along with many other expenses. We, we find ourselves, it appears the tenants have much more rights than the property owners, which is exceedingly frustrating, particularly since we aren't receiving any rent for, for this, and, and this is strictly out of the, out of the goodness of our heart. We, we've had to do, someone's complained to us that, that they are gonna stay there as long as they possibly can, because frankly, they've got no other place to go. That we finally did a 60-day notice to terminate the vacant, to terminate the tenancy of the property. We are currently in the middle of that. We've got about two weeks to go before the Sheriff's Office is able to come on and actually help us physically remove this. They, we, we asked the, a little patience. I know this has been a while, and, and we are doing everything, everything that we possibly can. And we, hopefully with this 60-day notice to, to vacate the tenancy, that this will be the answer to our problems. We've got a dumpster coming in, a large, very large dumpster coming in today, and we have an excavator coming in tomorrow to rip down the remaining.
Thank you.
So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Not, we'll bring it back to the Board. Mr. Mills?
Chair, I'd like to ask staff, Mr. Minehart, if he could give us a better idea of a timeline of when this whole situation could be brought back under control.
Courtney Minehart, Code Compliance. It all depends upon what the Board's wishes are as far as the timeline. I honestly believe he will get it done as soon as he has the power to do so. I would like to change my motions. Basically, my recommendation would be to get authorization, if for some reason it doesn't go through, that we are authorized to go in and clean it up and put a lien on the property for the cost of the abatement.
And your timeline would be what?
Three weeks?
How about, how about 30 days?
30 days?
30 days. Mr. Chair, I have a comment on this issue.
Sure.
As soon as the other gentleman gets done speaking, I'd like to address it.
Okay. No, that's, that's all I had, just to see if there was something that was going on. Appreciate it.
Supervisor Olivera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You can sit right there, Courtney, sit close. Mr. Schwartz, could I address you for a moment, sir?
Yes, sir, you may.
You need to stand up and come to the microphone.
You're on video.
Mr. Schwartz, have you ever contacted me regarding this particular issue?
Uh, no, I have not.
Do you know whose district this is?
I believe.
You live in District 3?
It's your district, yes.
Okay.
And, and I know that Mr. Minehart has talked to you.
He has, extensively.
And that was the reason that I haven't contacted you, is I didn't want to take up your time when I know.
Oh, don't worry about that, sir, that, that's what, all right.
Okay.
That's what I get paid for.
Okay.
The reason I've asked to address you on this is, all your neighbors have contacted me.
Yes, I know.
And it's become an issue that's, that's a priority. And I'm in agreeance with Supervisor Mills' recommendation and Courtney's recommendation about the extension and things of that sort. But I'm wondering, would it be beneficial if you were to maybe notify your neighbors of the progress and the problems?
I'd be happy to. Somebody will give me the list of, of people who have made a complaint, I'll be happy to contact them personally.
That might, that might, that might help us in this situation. Because they're, some, some are very engaged, is a good word.
Yes, I understand. And, and it would be nice if I were given, if they've kind of done this in a written form, if I could possibly get copies of their written form. I assume that to do a complaint like this, that they would do it in writing.
I'm, I'm trying to calm the waters, sir.
I got it, I thank you.
You know what I mean?
And I, and I would love to be able to contact my neighbors.
That'd be great. Maybe there's a way that we can do that to Code Compliance, or maybe a.
Absolutely.
Letter or something to their addresses, their post office boxes.
That'd be perfect.
And, and indicating to them your progress and your difficulty in getting this matter resolved. I am aware of, of the situation.
Good.
And I, I, I understand your position, and it's difficult. But I think, if we, if we let our neighbors know, we might be able to get this accomplished for the benefit of all.
Right. Right. I appreciate that, and I would love to smooth the waters with every one of our.
Excellent. Great. I want to make sure we got that. Thank you, Chair.
County Counsel, can you weigh in on this issue as far as giving out names and addresses?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that the county does not disclose the names of complainants. So whenever there is a, a complaint that comes into Code Compliance, the actual name of the complainant is not disclosed.
Okay. Takes care of that.
Send them a letter.
Yeah, I would love to know, but I guess we're.
We can cer, I would recommend that staff, I mean, certainly staff can reach out to the various parties and give them an update of, of how things are progressing.
Right.
That may help smooth things over, but I don't believe that the county can actually disclose the name of the complainant in order for the property owner to contact them directly.
Supervisor Clapp, you have something you wanted to bring up?
Yeah, I want to ask Courtney if, is this, is it a health act, issue right now? Is, is it on septic? Is it?
Sir, you, you can sit down now.
Oh, thank you. I guess the health hazard would be the people staying there, just in general, because at this point, they're illegally camping. As far as the sewer and stuff, it's still hooked up, but the house isn't, it's substandard. Nobody can live in it, half the walls are gone. What they're using at the current time, they're not supposed to be on the property, and so whatever they're using, probably not to Code. And to the issue of the notifying the people that were making the complaints, they can always call the office, and we give them updates. The ones that I work with have my email, they email me what's an update on the, on this project, and I let them know. So, but as far as the, the hazards, if they're still on the property, which I'm hearing that they are, yeah, I would say that it's a hazard.
So what would you consider a 30-day extension?
I was more like the three-week, anything.
Over three weeks? Three weeks you would like to see?
Yep, I'd like to see it, just for three weeks.
Bonnie, we, we close the comment, public comments.
And after that, then I would like the authority to go in and clean it ourselves.
I would make that motion, what, for the three weeks and if him given Code Authority to go in after three weeks.
Just for the purpose of clarity, Chair, I do need to reveal that my wife sat on the Murfrees Fire Board with Mr. Schwartz, but there is no personal or financial stake in this matter.
I see.
And Mr. Chair, before seconding this motion, Supervisor Clapp, Mr. Schwartz, I will be forwarding any information from the neighbors to Mr., to Courtney for dissemination at his will and under what we can legally do, as far as the folks in your neighborhood. And with that, my second emotion.
I have a motion by Supervisor Clapp, the second by Supervisor Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Bonnie, we addressed your issue on the next one, so we're fine. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion. Well, Madam Clerk, you want to read into the record, item 15?
Item 15 is from Code Compliance to uphold administrative citation for Pottery Dog Investments on Case Number 2011 and the contiguous properties identified as APN 054004061 and 054004060 located at 2539 and 2749 North Horseshoe Drive, Copperopolis, California, authorizing abatement and a lien for administrative and abatement costs.
So with that being said, I'm looking for a motion.
Public comment first.
Public comments. Are there public comments on this item? If not, I'll bring it back.
Chair, I'll move the item.
I have a motion by Supervisor Mills.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Olivera. Call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass 5-0. Looks like we're gonna get this in if our announcements are.
So item 20, OES, receive an update on disaster recovery activity throughout Calaveras County for boot fire 2015, tree mortality 2015, and winter storms 2017 has been pulled. Is there a date that it will be coming back, or is it indefinite?
At this ti, timeline, you want to, you want to add that, Ryan?
Yes, I believe it's the 20th second.
Are you, are you sure? Because I, I, I thought it was next week.
Was it next week?
I don't know.
Okay. Michelle, Michelle's here, maybe she can help out.
Good morning, or almost afternoon, it's Michelle Patterson, Calaveras County OES, and we will be prepared to deliver that update on the 15th.
On the 15th, so, next week.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, moving on to the next item, Supervisor Announcements. Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Announcements, in compliance with AB 1234, Chaptered as Government Code Section 53232.3D, Board members shall provide brief reports on meetings they attended at the expense of the local agency at the next regular meeting of the legislative body. This report is required to include meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement, such as mileage, meals, lodging, et cetera, but may also, at the Board member's discretion, include any other meeting attended by the supervisor on behalf of the county.
And we'll start with Supervisor Clapp.
Yeah, I attended the Dignity Health Board Meeting, I attended the CSA Number 1 Road, I attended Area 12, and I attended the Shamer Breakfast. In Area 12, we got the new updates on our population growth, and we are up to 38% over seniors in Calaveras County, and the state projects that to keep on growing. And we actually collected 600 more seniors than we did other people in the last year. So the seniors is still the driving force in Calaveras County.
Supervisor Mills?
For sake of time, I'll defer to next week.
Okay. Supervisor Olivera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Wednesday, the 25th, I attended the Calaveras Visitor Bureau Board Meeting, once again, discussing the, the efforts that they're doing, and they're doing a great job, especially with their mailouts and the outreach programs. We also discussed the Transit Occupancy Tax Committee meeting that was forthcoming after that. I did drop in and said hi to the Murfrees Advisory Committee, held at the old schoolhouse. That was done with Mr. Maurer in planning, looking at the projects that we're looking forward to in Murfrees as far as community access, things of that sort, sidewalks, looking towards the future. I attended, I attended on Friday night, one of the fun galas of Calaveras and Amador County. I was actually a judge for the Miss Senior Beauty Pageant, put on by Common Grounds and the folks up there. Great event, great event. We, it was a, it held at Jackson Rancheria, somewhat of a semi-formal event. I had nine contestants, and minimum age was 60, and they were all beautiful women. So, and I can say that because my wife was watching. I hope to do that again. This is my second time as a judge, and really a great, great fundraiser. It helps our seniors in the area, helps our Meals on Wheels program, and I'm very proud to be part of that program. That's about all I have, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Yaramendi?
How do, how you, how you survive picking the best-looking of a bunch of good-looking women?
You're sitting near the door, and when that judge, and when we hand in our ballots, and they announce it, you leave real fast.
Supervisor Yaramendi?
In the interest of time, noting that our clerk, our clerk is running an event outside in a minute, just quickly, I will just list through them. I went up to Humboldt for RCRC meeting for a two-day conference up there. UMR, Met, attended that, ran in the mud run, IHHS Advisory Committee Meeting, Mental Health Board, Frog Jump Event, first five, Cinco de Mayo Living Room Event for Mental Health, and here we are again. So I could give more detail at the next meeting, on those meetings.
All right. In interest of time, I will report next week. So staff, Mr. Moss, do you have anything?
I do not have anything today.
County Counsel?
I just want to invite everybody to the employee frog jump outside right now and the hot dog lunch.
All right. With that, we stand adjourned.